...feet, including garage excluding basement, in the RDA 20 zoning district. All buildings be a new construction or by expansion in which floor area is equal to or greater than 5,000 square feet, including garage excluding basement, in the RDB 10 zoning district. All buildings be a new construction or by expansion in which the floor area is equal to or greater than 3,600 square feet, including garage excluding basement, in the RG 6.5 zoning district. And this is the amendment 6.1. If an expansion is 500 square feet or less but still reaches one of the triggers in four to six above, the Zoning Board of Appeals may waive the site plan review at a public meeting. Seven, change in slope over 6% of existing grade of an area more than 500 square feet. This is an article to amend the zoning bylaws and accordingly it will acquire a two-thirds vote. The motion is brought by the Planning Board. On behalf of the Planning Board, the Town Planner, Brian Zakelli, Mr. Zakelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting. I'm here to talk about Article 2, just like the moderator said. So why are we here? Generally, this has been a neighborhood concern. Homeowners want to protect their property, promote responsible development around them, and ensure that character-defining neighborhood elements are respected when it comes to new development. Though of note, in general, the larger houses potentially have larger impacts towards stormwater flow, the streetscape or the look and feel of the street, public safety, so this has to do with sightlines, emergency vehicle access. And large house review is commonplace in similar strong real estate markets in Massachusetts. Though a lot of the draw of the real estate market is obviously schools and proximity to Boston. But the natural setting and quaint character of Winchester from town center all the way out to the neighborhoods helps to drive the desirability of real estate. So we have a beautiful housing stock that continues to attract new residents. Tree-lined streets as well as well-proportioned houses are certainly part of that equation. Looking at all communities that have a higher real estate average than Winchester, all except Concord and Newton have some type of site plan or design review for large houses. Concord and Newton don't have that because they actually have more strict districts. They have local historic districts or other types of design review districts. Those districts offer residents an appropriate review for new construction that is actually quite more stringent than what we're trying to propose. This is not to say that because these towns have it, we should too. It's really just to point out that communities with a rich, natural, and historic setting are using zoning tools to help protect those resources and their real estate markets continue to be strong. Extreme example. Winchester has generous zoning with regards to building coverage and height. Also, none of the pictures I'm showing today are in Winchester. That's kind of the point. Not that we, I mean, maybe we would see something like this. I kind of doubt it. But in the past five years, we have seen an uptick in new construction with many residents in all districts asking for some type of tool to either review potentially impactful properties or somehow change the table of dimensional requirements to lessen the amount of house that can be built by right. So this is a little bit hard to read, but the table of dimensional requirements essentially are the numbers that allow you to build a certain amount of feet from your neighbor, how tall you can go, how much of your lot can you cover. Mainly, we are looking at the RDA, which is the 20,000-square-foot zone. So that's the largest zone for a single family. The RDB, which is 10,000 square feet, which is also just single-family. And then the RG, which is 6,500 square feet, single and two-family. So changing the table of dimensional requirements to allow for smaller structures by right did not really sit well with a lot of people in town and therefore a review process was pursued. The current site plan review, what actually is in the code right now. So right now, site plan review exists for the IL district parcels that abut residential parcels. So the IL is the light industrial district. This is industrial uses. So the idea is there can be some friction between residential uses and light industrial uses. So there should be some oversight of that. Next is that in the GBD district, parcels over 15,000 square feet. So this is in the general business district of large parcels. The idea is that large parcels should be reviewed. Then, any parcel in any district, this is the only time where there's site plan review potentially all over town where 25 parking spaces are required. So you're looking at a large commercial building, a big restaurant, or anything, or probably at the minimum something like a 12-unit multi-housing complex, something like that. And then last year, we passed the CBD rezoning, which allowed for any change of use or increase in the floor space to have site plan review. So we want to expand on this. Site plan review is a process that's by the ZBA and the Planning Board to promote predictable safe development patterns. Under site plan review, a project cannot be denied and it does not make the property non-conforming. That would be a special permit under 3.5.5. So this just has to, so site plan review, I made it very clear that the zoning board in most cases cannot deny. I say "most cases" because they take 1, 2, and 3 up here and number 4, the Planning Board, does. But it does not make the property non-conforming. So here, it's a little bit hard to read by the colors, but maybe not too bad. So I've just circled the main areas where site plan review occurs. So it's hard to kind of turn and also talk. But the GBD and the other general business districts are basically right up Main Street. And then this tan is the light industrial and the blue is the RG. So this is where there could be potential uses that are incongruent with each other, where you have light industrial uses and residential uses. So what is the procedure? Like I said earlier, the CBD only conducts site plan review in the center business district and nowhere else. If it's not in the CBD, it is the Zoning Board of Appeals. No building permit can be issued until a site plan has been endorsed by the zoning board or the planning board in the case of the CBD. What happens is that the zoning board places reasonable conditions on the building permit for developments with potential impact. This is, the term reasonable conditions is from Massachusetts General Law. The question of what, a very easy question that everyone asks is, well, what are considered reasonable conditions? This is essentially for the zoning board, the applicant, and potentially the courts to determine. If you think that the zoning board would put, or if the zoning board puts conditions on your permit that you think are unreasonable, then you would appeal that through the court system. So what are these reasonable conditions related to? So there are reasonable conditions for site plan review relate to pedestrian, emergency, vehicular, and traffic safety, as well as landscaping, building scale and architectural character, stone walls, trees, screening, utility, and the location of a number of other things. One of the things in particular that site plan review looks at is neighborhood impact. So neighborhood impact is already in the code. The idea is with projects of significant impact or anything that would be initiated by a site plan review, you want to minimize the unreasonable departure from the character, materials, and scale of the buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. So this currently the zoning board is doing right now. So new prompts. So it'd be new construction. So a new house that would be 6,000 square feet, for instance, in the RDA 20. Or by addition. So you are at 5,000 square feet and you're putting a 2,000-square-foot addition on. And as you go down, the initiation for site plan review minimizes well. So if, we're not really looking at small additions. So the idea is if you reach, let's say you're in the RDA 20 and you have 5,500 or 5,600 square feet and you're going to put a small addition on 500 square feet or less, either a mudroom or a master bed on the first floor, the idea is that the zoning board would be able, would be allowed to waive that site plan review. So the idea is that small additions are not really what the target here. The target generally is the new construction that's very much out of scale with the rest of the street. The square footage here, these numbers, do include the garage, but it does not include the basement. And projects cannot be denied. It only initiates a review. So this is just a couple examples. Again, not pictures in Winchester, but in the RG, the smallest zone. So some of the homes could be, some of the square footage of the lots could be 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. So this would be, this is a home that, 3,800 square feet on a 6,800-square-foot lot. You can't see all of the lot, but you can see the houses that are pretty close to it. This is a relatively small lot and it's a relatively large house. Again, so this is a 5,000-square-foot home on a 10,000-square-foot lot. These are the types of projects that would be initiated by review. And again, in the RDA 20, something like this. This is a 6,000-square-foot home. Can't really see the 20,000-square-foot lot, but it's exactly a 20,000-square-foot lot. The last prompt is a change in slope. So if your property is pitched on a slope, slope is rise over run. So rise of, let's, for example, 3.44 feet over a run of 120. Your percent slope is right around 3%. The idea is if you're going to change that slope by 6%, meaning that if you're currently at 3% and you go to 9%, or if you're currently at 3% and you go the other way to a negative 3%, so it's a change in the slope of 6% of an area more than 500 square feet. The reason why that this, we even talked about this.
Mr. Zakelli, your time has expired. Would you care for more time?
Yes, not even five minutes.
It's moved and seconded that the speaker's time be extended for three minutes. All those in favor? Any pos? Please continue.
So transformation of existing grades affect neighboring properties. There are clearly other issues at play in this slide related to the scale of the building, the design. But this is here to mainly show that the grain changes which allow for a structure to tower over its neighbors is unnecessary, tower over its neighbors through grade changes is unnecessary. So excessive amounts of retaining walls and stormwater runoff are certainly issues associated with grade changing. So additional review of the change of natural topography is warranted. You can see that it's basically on a pedestal compared to the other houses in the neighborhood, which is still within the height zone that it would be allowed. But because it's graded in a way that kind of has a menacing feel, it's very much unnecessary and something like this should most likely be avoided. So again, we've seen an increased new construction over the past five years. Do affect your neighbor's property. You do invest in your street, not just your house. We've had growing feedback in the RG, the RDA, and the RDB, all related to scale of new housing. Excessive tree removal has certainly occurred as well as water runoff issues. The proposal is to use an existing review process. We're not trying to change it. Promote responsible development and we are trying to institute a conservative approach in comparison to other communities. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zakelli. May we have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action on Article 2. I think this is very light zoning and I think had a lot of the axe to it. As Brian earlier, how many impacted homes in the past year would be subject to regulation like this? And of the 22 new builds, there would have been 10. And this process is a, let's step back and see what we're doing, work with developers, and make suggestions about how to move forward sensibly. One of the great benefits for me running for office was besides standing at the transfer station in the middle of the winter was going door-to-door and speaking to residents about issues that were important to them. The number-one thing that people told me was the scale of homes being built in their neighborhood. One woman on Middlesex Street said, for 50 years she has lived in her home. And she wakes up every morning, has her coffee, walks out, looks out to Mount Pisgah and enjoys the view. She has a modest home, but it was important to her to have that continuity over the years. And she pointed behind me and I turned around and there's end-to-end a lot, a new two-family home. And she said, "I can't see that mountain anymore and I've been here for a long time. It's important to me." So what I think is important about the growth that we've experienced in Winchester over the past decade or more, and we've seen it in schools, in street traffic, is, you know, another one that we've been dealing with. But this number-one issue of growth and the change in the scale and the massing of some of the homes that's being built, it's come from residents. This is one article that's driven by residents. It involved a long process with developers, builders, and community members. Realtors were involved in this conversation too. And while not everyone has supported it, this was the lightest zoning tool that we could use to really protect some of these homes. And you're looking at a very short review time, three months. And as I said, only 10 homes would have been affected. But year over year, that makes a big impact on the integrity of the neighborhood and the identity of the neighborhood. And people have concerns. And I think working with developers, we can make some differences by tweaking certain structures to make it beneficial and reduce the massing. I think that it's very beneficial to the community. Recommend favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Corr. Mr. Powers. If I suspect the minority position. Mr. Powers is also a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We did have a meeting earlier tonight and Brian gave us a good summary. What would have happened? There were 20 houses involved. 10 of them were delayed and would be subject to a bylaw. I think it's against property rights. This is, you know, we're a town meeting, but a lot of these votes, I think, should start taking place with the public and let them have a vote because I think it would be a far different vote than what we see. But I think you should take into consideration the delay. You've got people that would be delayed up to six months to do something with their property. They want to modify their property. You're inviting the neighbors to come in and challenge what they want to do with their money to modify. Are you, oh?
Thank you, Mr. Powers. But we have a recommendation from the...
Mr. Orico. We were 3-2, which should have been...
Thank you, Mr. Powers. But we have a recommendation from the Winchester Historical Commission. It's Chairperson Heather von Maring. Miss von Maring.
Moderator. The Planning Board is responsible in creating a framework after the demolition of our historical resources and just demolition also. The ZBA is responsible for implementing the measures thereafter. Article number 2 promotes respectful development that falls in line with the neighborhoods and from our perspective, the historical neighborhoods as well. As we revitalize and restore existing homes, the room for growth should be encouraged to acknowledge the environment the buildings are placed inside. In addition, when properties of this massing and scale are placed into the historical neighborhoods in the zoning districts, it is critical that architects, site surveys, and landscapers are engaged so that we end up with contributing new construction. The Historical Commission voted unanimously in support and recommend favorable action of town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. von Maring. Before we go further on the question, this requires a two-thirds vote. So it will be necessary to appoint tellers for purposes of this town meeting. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Securus, Ms. Manzo, and Ms. Boney. If I could ask you to please stand if you could agree to act as tellers and ask you to raise your hand and affirm that you will provide a true and complete count of those members voting at the town meeting. Thank you very much. For purposes of the middle section, Ms. Manzo, Mr. Securus. Ms. Lattz will be on the left side and Ms. Dolan will be on the right side, your side, Mr. Securus. Ms. Boney, if you could count the Finance Committee and Mr. Johnson, if you could count the Board of Selectmen. Tellers having been appointed. Further on the question, Mr. Conti. Can we get that mic turned on? Is this lighting you requested, Tony? Could we bring the lights back up? We wanted the mic there and all the lights off. It's the first night, we're all shakedown crews. Go ahead, Tony.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Moderator. I'd like to point out that the Town Planner told us that the Planning Board would not have the authority to stop a project, only to impose reasonable conditions. But what are those reasonable conditions? What might they be? You know, frankly, the criteria that he suggested sounded to me that like they're subject to a lot of very subjective opinions. And it really is going to turn something. What site plan review in our town has always been really only used in cases of large projects which would have substantial impacts. However, in my, I'm increasing too, where much of the RG zone is located, where a 3,600-square-foot property would then become subject to site plan review. Now, what that means is if you have a 3,000-square-foot house, which is not at all unusual, and you want to put an addition of 700 square feet on it, you'd now become subject to site plan review, which would require appearance before the Planning Board in a public hearing, which would add... I'm sorry, it's only going, thank you for the correction. So a relatively minor project is now going to be subject to something that was once reserved for major projects. I frankly don't see the need for this. It's really going to, it's going to represent a burden upon property on this additional expense, delay, time, effort. I'm an attorney. It's a full employment project for attorneys. So maybe I shouldn't be objecting to that. But, you know, it's going to add to the cost when people want to make relatively minor project changes. And frankly, it gives the opportunity for every neighborhood gadfly to get their two cents in on a relatively minor project. For that reason, I ask that we vote no on this. Thank you.
Further on the question? Yes, ma'am. If it's on, you may speak there. Great, thank you.
My name's Colleen McGinnis. I am an architect and a town meeting member for precinct 1. I'd like to express my support for Article 2. Winchester residents currently have little to no control over the impact that a new home or large addition can have on their neighborhood. New homes in Winchester are nearly always built by a developer, not a homeowner. Winchester's become a target for developers because it does not have measures in place that are similar to neighboring towns. Through a site plan review process, which would include the opportunity for neighborhood feedback, this zoning amendment would ensure that new homes and large additions will be a responsible complementary change to a neighborhood. This amendment is not intended to limit house size or mandate a particular design type. Often, small design changes that incur little to no added cost can make a home more consistent with the scale and character of a neighborhood. Some examples are using roof shapes that are similar in scale and form to adjacent homes, using siding, stone, or other exterior materials that are consistent with neighboring homes. The passage of this article, residents who sell their home to a developer can have some peace of mind knowing that the new home that replaces theirs will not be detrimental to the former neighborhood. Since the new home that replaces theirs can still be just as large, the sale price of their property should not be negatively impacted. Developers will still want your property, but your former neighbors are much less likely to end up disappointed and angry at the change to their neighborhood. When a new home complements rather than detracts from its neighborhood, it improves the property value of the entire neighborhood. Therefore, I feel strongly that the passage of this article will benefit all residents.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGinnis. Further on the question? Yes. Certainly, Ms. Savage asked Mr. Zakelli what the landscaping portion of the Article 2 would entail.
Generally, it has to do with a lot of the removal of large trees or it could be a buffer zone where there was maybe a lot of landscaping there. But then due to either an expansion or a new construction that a large buffer zone has been... So the idea would be to possibly maintain as much of it as reasonably possible in terms of what the zoning board would do in any one case. What they would probably say is that every case is different. I know that's a horrible answer. But if you do ask them generally, you know, how are you going to vote on this or how are you going to vote on that? Everything is context-based. So it's a pretty difficult question and I'm sorry for the horrible answer.
Better? Okay. Judy Aronson, precinct 7. I have a couple of concerns. Someone mentioned this could be a six-month-long process for a developer. Maybe I'm not a developer, I don't know. Maybe that's not a big deal. I think for a homeowner, it might be, particularly if when they go through site review, they're told that they don't, site review says, "No, we don't like this," and they have to go appeal with an attorney. Ka-ching, ka-ching. I don't know how long that process with the attorney would be. Maybe Tony would know. But anyway, I also wonder whether the Planning Board and Zoning Board have talked with the public to get some information. I have to agree, when Steve Powers says maybe this should be on a ballot for all the people who are building homes to make a decision on, that may be a good idea. We've had an uptick, we were told, in the number of homes that are being built, particularly in this past year. And I think maybe all the homeowners would like to have some input and a chance to give what they feel should happen on this.
We had a series of public meetings starting in January. So we had five public meetings related to our spring town meeting articles. I understand it's very difficult for many people to come to evening meetings. That's why we thought five would be at least a good enough number. However, there's no way that we're going to be able to, you know, get all of the public, all the realtors. of the public, all of the realtors. But we did, I mean, we had lively debates on totally both sides. We had residents that were negatively affected by development. We had builders, we had realtors. They were, you know, it was a constant back and forth. Some meetings were very well-attended out of those five, some were not well-attended. You know, some maybe only had 10 or 12 people. But we were able to get a lot of information out of it. The idea of opening it up to the, to the entire town is not completely unreasonable. That's generally why town meeting votes for zoning are two-thirds, because it's a pretty tall order.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli. Further on the question, Mr. Orico.
Kelly, just a few questions. How would living area in the basement be handled? If there was a finished basement, if they had a bedroom and bathroom in the basement, how would that? Also, how would attic space be handled? Whether it be finished, not finished? Many new homes have finished attics that can be used for family rooms or whatnot.
Thank you, Mr. Orico. Mr. Zakelli, in response to Mr. Orico's questions.
So, we use the existing definitions in the Winchester zoning code. So, floor area does not include the basement, and floor area does not include the attic if it is for storage. If the attic is for living area, then it would count. The one thing that we are saying differently, that the number that we're using, the 3,600, 5,000, 6,000, includes the floor area of the house and includes the garage, but not the basement. There's been a clear, a couple people have been asking, "Well, what if the garage is in the basement?" Meaning, you know, part of the footprint. The idea is that we wouldn't count that. That doesn't make any sense. The idea is you want to kind of get the massing of the building, and that's why the garage is included. Some other towns do, do use the garage because it is part of the scale of the structure.
Thank you, Mr. Zakelli. Mr. Orico with a follow-up.
As a follow-up, whether you're for or against this article, it's my belief that there's some ambiguity with the terminology that's used in this article as it relates to, when you look at definitions, and when you have an article, a zoning article, you have to look at each word individually and how it is specifically written in the zoning bylaws. And when I read this article, I see some ambiguity with the term, for example, floor area, which in this article excludes, includes the garage, but the floor area definition in the zoning bylaws excludes that. So, whether you're for or against it, I think that this article needs to be, to be amended, tweaked, whatever, because I think it'll cause many issues in who's going to interpret this with the ZVA, who's going to enforce it. I don't know if it's possible to get Town Council to maybe give an opinion on that as it relates to the ambiguity on a few, some of these terms.
Thank you, Mr. Orico. Town Council, if you could opine on the consistency of the use of the term floor area as it appears in the article and otherwise in the zoning bylaws.
I actually believe that there is an ambiguity. I also believe that it was discussed at great length by the Planning Board. I'm not quite sure how they came down on it. I would say that the ambiguity does not automatically make this a bad article. The ambiguity will be resolved first if the building commissioner is level, second if the border zoning appeals, and ultimately, if a party is aggrieved, whether it's an owner or a neighbor, at the, under a judicial review, either in the land court or at the area court or, and on and on. So, the fact that there are ambiguities, and I don't think this is the only one that I know, but that does not necessarily mean that, you know, this is not a valid article for this town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Further on the question? Yes, Mr. Sekares. Both an open-ended and a dangerous question, Mr. Sekares, but we'll do our best. Mr. Welch, Mr. Sekares asked for a follow-up there and some clarification on your opinion that some ambiguity exists. As I understood, Mr. Welch's previous response, it was that he did allow, that his belief would include some ambiguity, but perhaps that ambiguity is not something that's foreign to regulation or legislation, and that as such, it will be resolved by the parties responsible for the enactment of the act or, as necessary, on judicial review. Mr. Welch?
Sure. Site plan review. What it means is that, because these are as-of-right, what it means is that the permit granting or reviewing authority, in this instance, it's not, it's a reviewing authority, which happens to be the border zoning appeals, can impose reasonable conditions. So, if in fact, I think the bylaw as proposed, or the definitions as proposed, for this particular exercise differ in part from what's currently in the existing bylaw. But that does not mean that, you know, you can't apply a different definition for a different, for a different review. So, therefore, the fact that other parts of the bylaw use floor area differently doesn't necessarily mean that floor area as it's used in this particular review process, in fact, is, you know, a violation of law. That's all it means. I hope that clarifies.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Yes, sir.
I'm Yang Zhang. I came from Precinct Eight. Talking about the ambiguity, so the Planning Board presented some development, let's...
Can you speak into the microphone? Thanks.
So, can the Board give us some example that development, how can they be harmful to the neighborhood? Can they give us some example? Also, in terms of ambiguity, so can the article involve more detail about how the review process will be done? So, is that purely closed-door, subjective, or they have some formula to judge your development plan, say if it's okay or not okay like that?
Sure, thank you. So, to you, Mr. Zakelli, the town meeting member asks if you could speak with some more particularity as to the review process itself and the factors that might be weighed and how the determination would be made.
Yeah, I'm just going to bring up very quickly. So, let me get this larger so this makes sense. But... Okay. So, the decision by the Board of Appeals is really based, I mean, there are 10 things that are used to look at the project. So, you can, we can go through every one if you, if you want, but generally, it's just to highlight it. So, minimize the volume of cut-and-fill, number of removed trees, provide stormwater management, maximize safety, provide adequate access, minimize obstruction of scenic views, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, layer from headlights, has to do with the areas of where parking are located so they're not in an obtrusive way, minimize unreasonable departure from the character, material, and scale, we talked about that, contamination from groundwater from onsite wastewater disposal, and ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw. So, it is in the books. We're not just changing any, anything in terms of the review procedure, which we're changing what initiates a review. So, you can see that there is certainly a lot of respect given to the, to the review authority board, in this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals, in almost all, in almost all cases. Basically, it says that they can only grant a determination based upon taking into account these 10 things. It's a, it is a public process. It is, it is a public hearing, so not behind closed doors and open.
Mr. Zakelli, if you could just clarify that 9.5.7 currently exists within the zoning code?
That's correct. This is the current code that we've been doing site plan review under for many years.
Thank you very much. Further on the question? Yes, sir. Mr. Zakelli, the question is whether or not the review having been made, the person who's having the review done on their property is required then to conform to the review?
So, you go through your review, a certain number of conditions, maybe get put on your perm, maybe get put on the building permit, then you would get a building permit issued to you with those conditions. If you choose not to follow it, that is a risk that you are taking. Will the zoning board and/or building commissioner come after you like the boogeyman? No, but you would be something illegal.
Let's clarify that a little bit. There's a little, there's a little bit more millennial risk-taking there than I might like, but the, I think, so the, the answer to your question is that, that no, that yes, what's going on is that you're applying for a building permit. You are required, if the project that you're seeking a permit for implicates these factors, you would then be required to go for that site plan review. The reviewing authority, the Zoning Board of Appeals, would then place reasonable conditions on the permit itself. So, you would not be authorized to continue with the construction unless it was in conformance with those reasonable conditions. So, yes, you would be required to comply with the reasonable conditions or otherwise appeal the imposition of those conditions. Thank you very much. Further on the question? Yes, Mr. Richards.
Jack Richard from Precinct One. Just to make a further clarification on that point, yes, you must comply, and if you do not comply for a long enough period, men with guns will show up on your property and make you comply. That's, that is inherent in every regulation we pass. You can either comply or else. So, keep that, and that's, it's not a comical point. It's a point to be made that when we, we should be careful about how we regulate our neighbors, because at the end of every one of these regulations is an "or else." That is the force that's required to make you comply if you don't. So, keep that in mind. I think that's important. Another thing, I, you all, you may know where I stand on the whole balance between property rights and the neighborhood rights. I'm far to the extreme, I guess, for most of you on the property rights point, but on this particular case, I have personal experience. I built a property in Rutland. I tried to build it. I had, it needed site plan review. It is not true that you cannot be denied site plan review. I was denied site plan review. In fact, if Mr. Welch could tell you, the prudential case says that if, if the conditions are so intractable as to not make themselves available for easy solution, a board can deny site plan review. So, please, no one here should be under the illusion that site plan review means you will get, will get a permit. You may not. I had to go after nine hearings, and after then, I sued the town. I spent two years in land court. When I say I sued them, I personally sued them. I won the case, but it added a great deal of expense and put a great deal of uncertainty into that development. So, that's, it's not true that you cannot be approved. Another thing I would ask Mr. Zakelli to do, just for clarification purposes, could you show the slide that had the slope graph on it, please, just for a second? My memory, and it went by quickly, was that the horizontal axis was 120 feet and the vertical was three feet. They seem to be so far out of any proportion.
Yeah, it's not, it's not...
No, can I, can I see it, please? Thank you.
So, let's, let's just follow the protocol here. One, if there are questions to be posed, they'll be posed through the chair, and two, once the question is posed, I'll state the question, will allow Mr. Zakelli time to respond, and then you can follow up as you would like, Mr. Richards. So, Mr. Zakelli, the question is whether you could display the graph showing the change in slope. So, that's before us, and Mr. Richard with follow-up.
Could I comment on the graph? That line looks to be about three feet. Now, 120 feet is roughly the length of this whole room, so that seems to make it look as only slopes at 6% will be affected, and those slopes are nothing like this. That bottom line on that slope might be 6% for all we know. That's a very small, 6% is a minuscule slope over that distance, and that line makes it look as if it's a major slope. Minor point, but it gets to the point of these other houses that were shown in this presentation, which are not in Winchester. And I don't see, you know, how they have any bearing on, on what we have here. And then, just an overall point. Essentially, what happens here is these developers, who have been made out to be boogeymen, they buy a property, and I assume they put some work or value into it and try to sell it for more. You know, on average, I would say it's probably fair to say they buy it in this town for about 500, and they sell it for about a billion. That's sort of typical. I don't...
The speaker will continue. The, the timing will be in order.
I guess, but the numbers aren't as important as my larger point. That is, when someone adds value to the property next to mine, I'm not sure how I understand that it takes away value from my property. I might not like it aesthetically, but markets have opinions too. And those things that draw better returns in the market, those houses that draw more prices, maybe not to my liking, maybe not to your liking, but to someone's liking, they are, in fact, an improvement. Otherwise, that property wouldn't go from its relatively lower value to its relatively greater value. So, I think for us to decide that we don't like them based on our aesthetic sense is not, is not fair. Yeah, I, another point that was sort of, I think it was glazed over, but I think it's terribly important. It gets to the essence of what we're talking about. If the dimensional requirements in town are insufficient in the general opinion of the folks in town, we should change those. But it was said that, well, there's not much support for that. We can't do that. So, let's institute this roving process where these extremely vague conditions, which give roving discretion to the board to decide that it's not in character with the neighborhood, or it's not quite what I would like to see there, that's not really a fair way to go about it. The essence of a fair law is that someone, before they act, can comport their behavior with the law because they know what it means. This is too vague. And essentially, I think it's based on a little fear of change. Robert Kennedy said that progress is a nice word, but change is its motivator, and change has its enemies. The people that built this town before us changed it to here. I'm glad they did. You don't have a right to enforce our temporary, subjective, and usually aesthetic views on the future. So, if we want to make changes as a group, as to how high a house should be, or how wide it should be, how much you should cover, let's do that. But let's not give a board roving discretion, and I would like maybe Town Council, if you could, to confirm my point, that you can be denied site plan review. I absolutely know what happens. I could cite the case, in that it changes this very much, and it adds expense to these things. Uncertainty and expense are the, are the enemies of any sort of economic problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Speaker's time has expired. There was a question for Town Council to the point of whether site plan review can be denied.
All the mass cases I have read on the subject say the same thing, that regulate the use site plan review on an as-of-right proposal, it regulates the use but does not prohibit. Now, that doesn't mean that you, that through litigation, it might go several years, but it's still, site plan review on as-of-right does not prohibit the use. It's a question for the courts ultimately would be whether the conditions imposed were reasonable or not. That's, that's mass law. So, Mr. Zakelli is correct when he says categorically that site plan review under this bylaw does not prohibit the use.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Ms. Savage, further on the question?
Free zoning districts that we're changing cover the full, cover all residences in town. And can you explain one more time how you came up with these square footages for each districts? And what percent of renovations in the last year would have been covered by these? You mentioned rebuilds, about half of rebuilds, but how many renovations?
I'll try to get all of them here. So, looking at the town, the colors, the colors are... That is most of Winchester. Site plan review already exists. Site plan review exists for large parcels in... That was question one. Sorry, what's question two?
Question two, Mr. Zakelli, was how the particular square footages in the motion were arrived at.
So, a lot of those were arrived at. We saw a very... We saw a very large uptick in the amount of large duplexes in the RG. A lot of the ones we were seeing are well over even 5,000 square feet, so 2,400 square feet for each, for each house, right in the sea of single-family homes that are on 4,000 square-foot lots. So we wanted to capture a lot of the two families, duplexes rather, and then when it came to the RDB 10 and the RDB 20, we didn't really want to capture every single new construction. We didn't, we thought that might have been a little onerous. So based upon, I mean, a new, a new home in Winchester basically starts in terms of, not on a small lot, so outside of the RG, you're looking at a right around 4,500 square feet, and then it goes up. So we were basing it on what, you know, how many projects we would really, not, how many projects the zoning board would really be, end up, end up reviewing when it came to new construction. I do not have a number for the renovations. This has generally not been a problem in terms of resident feedback at all. It's been a very, very minor issue related to the amount of additions that are happening. We do see a lot of additions that are 500 square feet or less. A very easy project that many families do is some type of a mudroom that's under 500 square feet, or a first, or turning a first floor, a first-floor home into, the first-floor of a home into an aging-in-place so that you can have everything on the first floor, so you'd have a master bedroom with a bath. So everything else would generally be there except for the bedroom and the bath. Again, I was trying to say that we could, that the zoning board could waive the site plan review for 500 square feet or less. So we are less concerned about the additions, and I can honestly say we do not have that analysis in terms of how many houses would have been initiated by the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Zakely. The motion comes before the Town Meeting on Article 2. It requires a two-thirds vote. A vote in favor would be to adopt the changes proposed by the Planning Board and articulated by Mr. Zakely this evening. All those in favor, please rise, and the tellers will come. 155 members of the meeting having voted, 104 required for passage, 114 having voted in the affirmative, Article 2 passes. This brings us to Article 3. It is 10:08. We'll go to 10:30 and see where we are. It has in my hope to complete the non-financial articles tonight, but I don't want to keep the meeting too late. We will proceed on Article 3. Under Article 3, another motion by the Planning Board. It's moved in second to see if the town will vote to amend Section 10.0 of the Winchester zoning bylaw by adding new entries for green space and hardscape and including such in the Table of Dimensional Requirements in Section 4.0 of the Winchester zoning code. Code: New definition of green space to include grass, trees, shrubs, vegetation, or other softscape areas, pools, fish ponds, or other water features, including but not limited to fountains, and specifically does not include areas for parking. New definition of...